All right, good job.
The director beamed with pride as he showed off his council proclamation.
And actually, you are exactly where they tapped them for the final number. They did the final right here. So it's very touching.
But it wasn't just the director getting singled out. The entire cast was honored with each one receiving their very own proclamation, including the film's canine co-star Uggie the Dog. Then it was time for the big moment. The team behind the artist was given the city's first ever Made in Hollywood Award for shining a spotlight on Hollywood and for demonstrating true artistry. In Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The artist is nominated for 10 Academy Awards, including, of course, Best Picture. The Academy Awards airs Sunday, February 26. The city's controversial decision regarding impounding vehicles hits a roadblock. The Blue Butterflies at LAX continue to thrive, and animal services may be all bark, no bite when it comes to collecting unpaid fees. These stories and more in City Beat.
The Los Angeles Police Commission had planned to relax its policy of towing and impounding vehicles driven by people without a valid driver's license, but the commission is now postponing that vote after a legal opinion from a state legislative body says local government does not have the authority to change the law. The commission's initial decision to change its towing policy was in response to complaints from immigrant rights groups that the policy targets undocumented workers who are unable to get a California driver's license. The five-member police commission has rescheduled the vote on this issue later this month. The recently completed population count of the El Segundo Blue Butterfly, which have found a refuge in the 200-acre Dunes Habitat Preserve at Los Angeles International Airport, estimates the population of the endangered species to be between 120,000 to 126,000 that exist today. That's an increase of 8% over 2010. Back in 1976, there were fewer than 500. Los Angeles World Airports, the department that oversees LAX, worked with environmental experts to create the Dunes Habitat Restoration Project in 1986 to focus on reintroducing and protecting the coastal buckwheat plant, the butterfly's sole food source. The city librarian, Martin Gomez, is stepping down from the post he's held for three years to assume the post of vice dean of the University of Southern California Libraries in April. Mayor Antonio Viegas issued a statement regarding Gomez's resignation as city librarian, calling Gomez's service to the Los Angeles Public Library outstanding. The most recent audit of L.A. Animal Services conducted by Los Angeles City Controller Wendy Gruel reveals the department is plagued by lax controls and a lack of continuity in management, creating an environment with the potential to jeopardize animal safety. One finding reveals that the department failed to maintain a physical inventory of the animals under its care. Over the last two years alone, Gruel says animal services also neglected to collect over $1.3 million in potential revenue from dog owners.
In this week's list of things to do, a rare collection of Ansel Adams photos, an exhibit on the history of Los Angeles, and a safety safari at the zoo.
Rare Ansel Adams photos of Los Angeles from Los Angeles Public Library's photo collection will be on view at Darkroom Gallery from now through March 17. These photos include rare images of pre-war Los Angeles taken by Ansel Adams and donated by the photographer to the Los Angeles Public Library. Famous for his black and white landscapes, Adams shot more than 200 pictures of Los Angeles on assignment for Fortune magazine in 1940. The Darkroom Gallery is located at 727 South Spring Street downtown. For more info on this exhibit or the gallery, go to drkrm.com. For more on L.A.'s history, head on over to the Banning Museum to check out the permanent exhibit called "Improbable Gateway: The Los Angeles Transportation Legacy." The exhibit tells the remarkable story of vision and perseverance of the individuals who would change 19th-century Los Angeles from a desert surrounded by rugged mountains into an international gateway and center of commerce and influence. The Banning Museum is located at 401 East M Street in Wilmington. Go to banningmuseum.org for details. The Los Angeles Zoo and Radio Disney AM 1110 will host the Second Annual Safety Safari at the zoo from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Saturday, February 25. Families can meet safety experts, take home safety tips, learn how to build an emergency kit, and much more. The Los Angeles Police Department will bring along a patrol car and motorcycle for youngsters to see up close. The zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to LAZoo for more information. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
Valentine's Day isn't just for young people, but also for the young at heart. More than 500 seniors from 22 of the city's senior clubs and organizations attended an annual celebration hosted by council member Jose Wezar.
No corsages or dates necessary at this Valentine's-themed dance. Seniors who attended this fifth annual East Side event, the Senior Snowball, held at Los Angeles Christian Presbyterian Church, enjoyed music, dancing, and good eats. The event, held for seniors living in Boyle Heights, El Sereno, and northeast Los Angeles, is a way for council member Jose Wezar to say thanks for all they've done to help improve the community.
Especially this generation. You know, we have people here who fought in the Second World War, who fought in the Korean War, in the Vietnam War, who did so much for this country. It's our way of saying thank you.
There was even a raffle for prizes like a blender, coffee maker, and griddle.
I like it. Very much I like it.
Music was provided by the popular East Side band Chico, as well as by Strings and Voices, a senior musical group. And boy, did they get folks out on the dance floor.
I sing, I dance, I laugh, I talk to all the girls I know. I mean, I'm having a great time.
And Eleanor Aguilar's Valentine of 65 years was enjoying the ball right alongside her.
Oh, we're having a lot of fun here. We get to meet all these people here. We hug and kiss.
A happy Valentine's, indeed.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook to check out stories you might have missed. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Saving energy is simple. It even saves you money. Replace incandescent light bulbs with compact fluorescent bulbs. Set your thermostat to 78 degrees or higher in the summer. Weather seal your home. When replacing old appliances, select Energy Star-qualified appliances that are up to 40% more efficient. And unplug electronic devices when not in use. Visit ladwp.com for more energy-saving tips and information. Save energy, save money.
Hi, I'm Craig Irwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Irwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city radio channel.
This isn't for the presentations. This isn't for the presentations. I should have gotten under that.
I know. We'll be on here early.
Sergeants, if we could please call, call the members. Notify them that it's time to come to chambers. I do want to thank the members of the On Time Caucus that are here today. Mr. Coretts, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Zine. So sergeants, if you could call the members so that we could begin today's council meeting. I don't see you guys walking to the phones. Oh, he needs backup, okay? Good morning, everyone. My name is Herb Wesson. I'm the president of the Los Angeles City Council. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we're going to begin the day with the presentation portion of today's meeting. I'm going to ask a dear friend and colleague, Mr. Dennis Zine, to begin today's presentations. Mr. Zine, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you. And beautiful Friday morning here. And I've asked, do we have any Girl Scout cookies? And I was informed they don't want to bribe me, so...
We'll get you cookies.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine, the, uh, the, Ms., the Samoras, or whatever they're called, yeah, that's what we want.
Very, very, very good.
Mr. Wezar, the last time we're going to interrupt you, Mr. Zine.
It's okay, because we've got some time, and time is on our side. Here we come, Girl Scouts, come on up.
Mr. Zine, my daughter is selling cookies, so I'll bring her her form tomorrow, and you can buy some cookies from her.
Let me tell you what I do, is I buy Girl Scout cookies, and I deliver them to local fire stations in my district, because firefighters, and we have a lot of firefighters here, we know that they have that opportunity to eat at the station, right? They have to have nourishment, and Girl Scout cookies have good nourishment, so what I do is I take them to the stations in my district. So I will happily buy some from your daughters. I know you have four, or five, or six, or seven selling cookies, so I'll take care of that. So we are joined this morning by Girl Scouts, and you are not playing hooky from school, you're on a field trip. Remember that. This is a field trip. We learned that a couple days ago. When you come to city council, it's a field trip, especially during school hours. Girl Scouts of the United States of America, founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Low, celebrating 100th anniversary and its exceptional history of leadership. 100 years, the Girl Scouts. Let's hear it for the Girl Scouts for 100 years. Thousands of girls, grades K through 12, and adult volunteers are part of 42,000 girls and 23,000 volunteers that are developing courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. The Girl Scouts tradition of building leadership is apparent in the fact that 66% of women professional achievement were Girl Scouts, including leaders in government, business, and arts, science, technical fields, sports, education, and stewardship. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Los Angeles, the city of the angels, hereby joins the nation to applaud the Girl Scouts of the United States of America and proudly proclaim March 11th through 17th, 2012, as Girl Scouts Week. Let's hear it for the Girl Scouts from America. Ms. Perry, were you a Girl Scout?
Yes, I was, or yes, I am.
Ms. Perry is a Girl Scout. Okay, just want to make sure, because we have...
Once a Girl Scout, always a Girl Scout.
All right, there we go. And we have a member of the leadership that's going to address our distinguished body. And look at these wonderful Girl Scouts. The future of America is right here. There you go. Take it away.
Hey, Mr. Zine, before she speaks, we do have a Girl Scout for Life on the queue to speak. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Ms. Perry.
I just want to say to the young ladies, I'm very proud of you. My early years as a Brownie and a Girl Scout, or Brownie Cadet Girl Scout, I got it in the right order, right? I learned a lot about teamwork, about achieving, about being disciplined, about being organized, and working with community, and being very task-oriented. I had lots and lots of badges, and so it's really inspiring to see all of you in these beautiful updated uniforms, still out there doing what we do best, and it builds good character, and it makes me very proud as an American woman to look out here and see the next generation of young ladies coming behind us to continue to rebuild and replenish our communities. So I think it's wonderful to see you today. And I still buy the cookies, and I buy lots of them, so call me when the season opens. And what I do is I buy them and I give them away to people, okay? So I support you.
Season opens March 2nd.
Thank you. I'll be waiting for my email, okay?
Okay, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Lisa Letkins, the chief executive officer of the Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles, and it's a great day to be a Girl Scout. Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles is so honored to be with the city council here today to launch our 100th anniversary. We serve over 41,000 girls in partnership with 24,000 adult volunteers across a 6,200-square-mile area. We help girls develop leadership and life skills and participate in community service through our six program areas. Our 50 million living alumni across the nation are proof that what we teach today impacts the leaders of tomorrow. 80% of all female business owners and 68% of female members of Congress were Girl Scouts, and as you just heard, council member Perry is still a proud Girl Scout. Thank you. Three weeks ago, I was on Capitol Hill, joining leader Nancy Pelosi and other members of Girl Scout troop Capitol Hill to launch a new initiative to achieve balanced leadership in this generation. Today, we are highlighting this unique moment in history to create a foundation for all girls from all walks of life in Greater Los Angeles. Our cause, simply put, is to break down societal barriers that hinder girls from leading and achieving success in every field, from public service to business, industry, science, technology, environment, and the arts. We're calling on all members of society, starting with every person in this room today, to help girls reach their leadership potential. Because when girls succeed, so does society. And all of us have a role in making that happen. Together, we will get her there. We have pledge cards for anyone who would like to join us in our To Get Her There cause. Council member Perry has been the first in the room to sign the pledge this morning, so we hope you will join us. Thank you, council member Perry. We're in your debt.
I'll be number two.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we have one right here. Thank you to all of you who are here today to support the Girl Scouts in our 100th anniversary year.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd just like, I know this is going to be televised, it's live right now, it'll be televised this evening also over the weekend, and I'd just like the girls to give us your name and the community you're from. And then we're going to go in the back and do a bunch of photographs. So as the Girl Scouts that are here, if you just tell us your name and the community you're from.
Taylor Gomer, Covina.
Rio Ronoff, Covina.
Parrish Church, Covina.
Audrey Yang, San Marino.
Where?
San Marino.
Katie Cito, San Marino.
Vivian Lu, San Marino.
Laurel Ost, Palos Verdes.
Rachel Enders, Palos Verdes.
I am a Girl Scout. Carol Dietrich, and I'm from Santa Monica.
All right, very good.
Hi, Betsy Brewer, Los Angeles.
Martha Rodriguez, Church, Covina.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to go back and do photographs, and Mr. Wezar is going to be taking orders next week for Girl Scout cookies. If there's anyone watching television that have Girl Scouts in the third council district, my district, stop by my office on Van Owen, and we will buy some, but the Girl Scouts have to come, not the moms, but the Girl Scouts have to actually come to the office. We'll buy Girl Scout cookies at my West Valley office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Oh, no.
And if anyone needs to find cookies right away, go to our website, www.girlscoutsla.org, and click on the cookie locator, and we will get you right to a booth of girls selling cookies.
Thank you. Thank you all. Let's give the Girl Scouts another round of applause. 100 years. As they are departing, I'd like to request that, Mr. Parks, if you're ready, you're up next.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And in observance of Black History Month, we are here to recognize and pay tribute to the achievements of five African-American fire chiefs from various Southland Fire Departments. They are Chief Calvin E. Wells, Pasadena Fire Department, if he could stand and join us; Chief Harold Scoggins, Glendale Fire Department; Chief John Thompson, Compton Fire Department; Chief Brian L. Cummings, Los Angeles City Fire Department; and Chief Darrell L. Osby, Los Angeles County Fire Department. In no particular order, we begin with Chief Calvin E. Wells, who began his fire service career with the Los Angeles Fire Department in January 1978. He was hired by the Pasadena Fire Department in November 1979, serving in the capacity of firefighter, fire inspector, fire engineer, fire investigator, and fire captain I, fire captain II, battalion chief, assistant fire chief, and deputy fire chief, prior to being appointed fire chief in September 2011. Chief Wells holds an AS degree in fire science and a BS degree in political science. Additionally, he is a graduate of the Carl Holmes Executive Development Institute, Executive Fire Officer Program at Dillard University. Chief Wells is an adjunct instructor at Pasadena City College, Glendale Community College, and the Arroyo Seco Regional Fire Academy. He maintains active membership in numerous professional and trade organizations. Chief Wells resides in Pasadena, California, with his wife, Rana, and two children. He remains active in his community by serving on the Board of Directors at the Pasadena Senior Center and the First T Program of Pasadena. He enjoys coaching youth baseball and participating in competitive golf tournaments during his leisure time. leisure time.
Members of the City Council, I am humbled and honored by this recognition. It's particularly special to me, being a native of Los Angeles. I had the opportunity to grow up watching and observing some great civic leaders in this city, the likes of Gil Lindsay, the Emperor of the Great Knights, Tom Bradley, Dave Cunningham, the list goes on, to Nate Holden, to Councilman Parks. Playing on the fields of Ballin Hills and youth sports, graduating from Los Angeles High School, and being a member, long-term member, of Council District 10 here in the city. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Councilmembers Perry and Parks for making this recognition possible here today, and thank you for your time and attention. I do not have family here today.
Thank you.
Give him a round of applause.
Next, we have Chief Harold Scoggins, who began his fire service career by joining the United States Air Force, where he served from 1984 to 1989. Chief Scoggins joined the Glendale Fire Department in 1989 as a firefighter, and he has been with the department for 23 years and has served in various positions and assignments. He was promoted to Fire Chief on May 1st, 2008. Chief Scoggins holds an Associate of Science degree in fire technology from Glendale Community College, a Bachelor of Science degree in fire administration from Cal State University at Los Angeles, and a Master's degree in public administration from Cal State University at Long Beach. During his employment with Glendale Fire Department, Chief Scoggins has worked in all aspects of the department, including assignments and supervision of the mechanical maintenance section, the warehouse, Verdugo Communications Section, training and safety, operations, and fire prevention. He has also served on the Glendale Fire Foundation Board of Directors and has developed and organized Christmas programs in the Glendale community. Chief Scoggins is and has been involved in a number of community organizations, such as the American Cancer Society, Relay for Life, Red Cross Board Member, Glendale Youth Alliance Board Member, Salvation Army Board Member, Glendale Memorial Hospital Community Board, Glendale Adventist Hospital Advisory Board, and a member of the Glendale Homeless Commission. Chief Scoggins is also the immediate past president of the Los Angeles Area Fire Chiefs Association, and is currently Area 2 Representative for the California Fire Chiefs Association. Chief Scoggins serves as an emergency medical service volunteer at Faith Community Church in West Covina. He has also stayed involved in his community, coaching youth basketball, baseball, and football, and he is the president of the West Covina Junior All-American Football and Cheer Program that serves almost 300 children annually. He has been an instructor at El Camino College Fire Academy and currently serves as an adjunct faculty member at Mount SAC College. He is married to his wife Abigail and has four children, Anthony, Jasmine, Nicole, and Isaiah. And in his spare time, he enjoys going to sporting events and playing sports and working on projects at home.
Chief, before, when Ms. Perry was giving your background, it reminded me of the fact that Mr. Parks used to be involved in youth football, and so did I, so you're all right with us. I just wanted you to know that, sir.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. First, I'd like to say good morning to everyone, and I would like to thank Councilman Parks for reaching out to the African-American fire chiefs here in the region and putting this together. It's a special day for each and every one of us, getting us all together, just for a bit of fellowship, and just getting to know each other a little bit more. The gentlemen behind me, I consider them all my friends, so today is a blessing for us all to be together. I would like to thank a few people here today, my command staff, who showed up to support me, and my fire prevention staff. It's a blessing for-
Stand up, guys.
Thank you. I would like to thank my wife, Abigail, who's very special to me and supports me in everything that I do. And two of my kids are here today, Nicole and Isaiah. My youngest, too, my older, too, they're a bit older, so they kind of grow up and do their own things, as older kids do. My involvement in the fire service is very special to me. I have a passion for what I do. I'm proud of what I do, I'm proud of the organization and the community that I serve. It's given many blessings to my family and myself, and each and every day, I look at coming to work as a blessing, and I'm a servant in the community. So thank you, Councilman Parks, for putting this together. We appreciate the support of the surrounding communities, and everyone have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have Chief John Thompson, who began his career with the Compton Fire Department in 1984 as an ambulance operator. Two years later, in 1986, he was sworn in as a firefighter, and as the years went by, he moved up in rank, and in 1995, he was promoted to captain and immediately assumed the role of Emergency Medical Services Coordinator. During the following years of service, Chief Thompson obtained his Bachelor's degree in emergency management. He continued to hold the position of captain in the fire department until 2005, when he began serving as the Deputy Fire Chief. He continued to progress in the fire service, and in 2007, assumed the role of Fire Chief in the city of Compton. Currently, Chief Thompson is a Commissioner for the Los Angeles County Emergency Medical Services Commission, and is Chairman of the Provider Agency Advisory Committee. He represents the Los Angeles Area Fire Chiefs in both organizations. In addition to these highly regarded positions, he is currently a member of the United Firefighters of Southern California, the Los Angeles Area Fire Chiefs Association, the California Fire Chiefs Association, as well as the International Association of Fire Chiefs. Chief Thompson has served as the administrator of the James Shurn Fire Academy for 10 years, more than 10 years, actually. He actively supports the Compton Fire Explorer Program, which is one of the most decorated Explorer Programs in the state. Chief?
Counsel, I'd like to thank everyone for this privilege today to be here. I'm humbled and honored to really thank Councilmember Parks and Ms. Perry here, because this truly is a great honor, because, you know, the fire, I'm gonna tell you a secret, I'm gonna tell you a secret, don't let it out, that the fire service is the best career there is. Quite a few of us that know that here. And I really enjoy this career, and I've done so ever since being Explorer, actually. And therefore, I try to give back to the community. So it's nice to be honored, something as this today, and to work alongside these gentlemen that stand here with me, as well as the rest of the LA Area Fire Chiefs and all the firefighters within this community and others, it's truly a blessing. And just want to let you know, as is stated in the, what Ms. Perry read today, is that this evening is the Fire Explorers Banquet, I believe it's Quiet Cannon, and our Explorer Program is receiving the most awards out of all the Explorer Programs. It's a great achievement for such a small city, so if you don't have anything else to do tonight, if you'd like to come, just come on out, Chief Osby will be speaking as well, so it's a great occasion to come out. But once again, I really thank you for this honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Let me ask Chief Darrell Osby to come up. Our next award is for Chief Darrell Osby, he was sworn in as the LA County, by the LA County Board of Supervisors, as the ninth Fire Chief in LA County Fire Department on February 17th, 2011. He served as a member of the Los Angeles County Fire Department for 27 years, including 15 as an accomplished chief officer. Just prior to his appointment as Fire Chief, he served as Chief Deputy of the Business Operation, a role in which he successfully managed the department's Administration, Prevention, and Special Services Bureau, Risk Management Division, Employee Relations Division, and Professional Performance Section. He has steadily risen up within the organization, has held every rank, including firefighter, paramedic, firefighter specialist, fire prevention inspector, fire chief, fire captain, battalion chief, assistant chief, deputy chief, and then chief deputy. Now as Fire Chief, he heads one of the largest emergency service agencies in the world, providing traditional fire and life safety services to more than 4.1 million residents and commercial business customers in the 58 cities served by the department and all of the unincorporated areas of the county within a 2,300-square-mile service delivery area. Chief Osby has served as a board member of several community organizations, including previous president of the Centurions, and is currently a member of the 100 Black Men LA Chapter. He's affiliated with many fire service organizations, and previously served on the California State Board of Fire Services, and is a former member and chair of the LA County Emergency Preparedness Commission. Chief Osby knows his organization well, and has chaired many LA County Fire Department committees and programs, including the Disaster Preparedness Program, the Chaplain Program, and the Region One Emergency Coordination Center Program, among others. He has always been a strong advocate and a personal mentor for local youth by serving in leadership positions for many organizations, including the LA Junior Firefighter Foundation and the Youth for Excellence Foundation, and the Learning for Life Explorer Program. Chief Osby is an advocate of continuing education and currently holds a Bachelor's degree, Bachelor's of Science degree in organizational leadership from Azusa Pacific University, is also a graduate of Harvard University's prestigious Senior Executive in state and local government, and National Preparedness Leadership Program, completed the Clark Atlanta University Executive Development Program, and the Martin Gang Institute of Intergroup Relations at Loyola Marymount University. He's a California State Certified Incident Commander and Chief Officer. Chief Osby has received much recognition for the fire service, for his contributions. A short list includes Community Service Award from the Centurion Fire, Centurion Firefighter of the Year Commendation, the Overachiever Award from the Los Angeles County Firefighters Association, and the Gwen Bolden Foundation Award, Learning for Life Badge of Honor, and several other awards from community governmental and professional organizations. Chief Osby has two daughters, Stephanie and Nicole. Chief Osby.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize the Honorable Counsel, the city staff, and distinguished guests here, especially Councilmember Parks and Councilwoman Perry for putting this program together and the enlargement of recognizing myself along with my peers here with me, and definitely, as indicated earlier, it was a brotherhood. So I've been standing in the back, I've just been reminiscing of my career and listening to the bios of my peers, and I think that when you listen to those bios, it's quite evident that we worked very hard to achieve the positions that we hold today, and also we are working very hard to maintain them. But I would be very remiss, especially in the month of Black History Month, if I didn't take a moment to recognize those gallant warriors that preceded us, that created an opportunity for myself, along with my peers, to compete for our respective positions. So with that being stated, as I stand here, I think about those people that have stood up for mankind to ensure that we have a better society. I recognize that myself, along with my peers, have that same commitment to ensure that we maintain those efforts and increase them for the future, to ensure that other people have those same opportunities as we had to pursue careers and excel in careers. So once again, on behalf of myself, my department, my peers, I'd like to thank the City Council for this achievement and this award today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Lastly, I'd like to ask our own Chief Brian Cummings to come up. Before I go into his bio, one thing I'd just like to say for those in the public and the general listening audience, one thing I hope you realize the significance of honoring five African-American fire chiefs in the LA County. It wasn't too long ago in this county, it was difficult for African-Americans to become firefighters. There are, there's more than enough documentation that show that even upon becoming a firefighter, they were treated as second-class citizens, to the point of having to live in separate quarters, separate eating activities, and a variety of things, and then they broke the barriers of the promotion. We only have to look very recently in our own city history as to the most, the infamous dog food case that we had, to show that everything isn't all right in the fire services universally. And so I think it's important that we realize that these young men went through a civil service process, they didn't just get appointed by someone that got elected, they got a civil service process, they went through the ranks, they went through the chairs, and they couldn't be denied. And so I'm just pleased that all five are here. And I'd like to give a background on Chief Cummings, who is a 32-year veteran of the Los Angeles Fire Department with an exemplary record as a firefighter, engineer, captain, battalion chief, assistant chief, and chief of staff. Chief Cummings joined the fire department as a firefighter in 1980, promoted to engineer in '88. He then earned promotions to Captain I in '93, Captain II in 2000. In 2003, he took command of the LA Fire Department Battalion 13, managing five fire stations in South Los Angeles. As a commander of Battalion 13, Chief Cummings maintained strong relationships with various community organizations, clubs, and churches, as well as with the Los Angeles Police Department and the Los Angeles County Fire Department. In 2005, Chief Cummings assumed the command of the Recruit Training Section of the Los Angeles Fire Department. In 2007, he took command of Battalion 6 in the Harbor area, overseeing operations of nine fire stations responsible for the fire protection to the Port of Los Angeles and three major refineries and a host of heavy commercial occupancies. In 2009, Chief Cummings assumed command of the Fire Department's Battalion 1, managing five task force sections in downtown area of Los Angeles. Then in 2010, he was assigned to the Planning Section of the Los Angeles Fire Department, where he oversaw the Fire Chief's staff and assisted with the management of the day-to-day functions of the Los Angeles Fire Department. As a planning chief, he coordinated research, project, staff studies, and formulated the goal and objectives for the department. In 2010, Chief Cummings was promoted to the position of Assistant Fire Chief and was appointed as a Chief of Staff. As a Chief of Staff, his primary responsibility was to serve as the executive assistant to the Fire Chief. Chief Cummings assisted the Fire Chief in the planning and implementation of short and long-range goals for the department. He interacted with the mayor's office, members of the city council, various civic groups, and department command staff. He was appointed to the position of Fire Chief September 7th, 2011, by the current mayor. Chief Cummings was born and raised in Los Angeles. His father was a 30-year veteran of the fire department. He graduated from Loyola High School and attended both West Los Angeles College and the University of California at Los Angeles. He's married, the proud father of two daughters. Chief Cummings.
I want to start by thanking Councilman Parks and Councilwoman Perry for bringing us all together. This is quite an honor. I want to thank my lovely wife, who was in attendance, Rochelle. Without her, I wouldn't be here. She's the strength behind everything that I do. I'd like to also thank the command staff and administrative staff of the Los Angeles Fire Department that did show up to support me today. Thank you very much for all that you folks do. Chief Osby was very correct when he touched on the history of how we got here. 65 years ago, my father came on the Los Angeles Fire Department, and it was a vastly different department. And to draw a line from there to where I am today, that's quite an accomplishment. And that couldn't have been accomplished anyplace else but in America. I don't think it could have been accomplished in any city but Los Angeles. When we have our current mayor, who is dedicated to having a workforce that reflects the communities that we serve, when we have a city council that supports diversity as strongly as they do, and sees the value and the strength in that, when we have a department, the current administration of the department, that looks for people that are qualified to do the jobs and to do the tasks and provide public safety irrespective of their backgrounds, irrespective of their gender, irrespective of their nationality. When we bring that together into an organization like the Los Angeles Fire Department, we're able to provide the best public safety anywhere in the world. And I'm very proud to be the Fire Chief that has the opportunity to lead that. It's humbling to stand here with these four gentlemen, the accomplishments that you heard read before you. These are some fantastic brothers, partners in public safety. So thank you once again for this honor, and we look forward to continuing providing the best public safety that there is. Thank you.
Let's give them another round of applause. They spend most of their time- They spend most of their time protecting us, serving us, keeping us safe. Okay, to the members of the audience, we now do have a quorum. We're going to move to our next presentation after I go through today's agenda. So with that said, let's quickly go through the agenda. This council meeting is in session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alarcon Buscayeno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Corretz, Ricordi, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Wesson, 13 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretz moves. Mr. Englander seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Wezar seconds. And that would bring us to where? To begin going through the first section of the agenda?
Yes.
Let us do that.
Items one through five are public convenience or recessive items known as for public hearing. Motions are required for item one, which is in Council District Three, and for item two, which is in Council District 15.
Continuance of one?
Specials members? Is that Mr. Zion? Any other specials members? Any cards?
No cards.
So we can open and...
Excuse me, Mr. President. A motion is required for item number two. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that one on the desk for now. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item?
Items six through eight are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, any specials on these items? Seeing and hearing none?
Excuse me, Mr. President. The committee reports have not been circulated yet for items six through eight. Do you wish to hold these on the desk?
I don't have a choice. Okay, so let's hold them on the desk, and let's move to the next section.
Items nine through 22 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Any cards on these items?
Cards on items 10, 11, and 17.
10, 11, 17. Members specials. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to continue item number 10. I know there's a card, but we have been asked to continue that to Wednesday, February 29?
Without objection.
Okay, and should item number 11 pass, we'd ask that I go forth with, please.
Well, let's hope that it passes. Mr. Buscayena.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call special item number 18 on a technical amendment.
Mr. Rosendahl, did I see you? Did you want to... Mr. Englander.
Item 16 forthwith, please.
Item 16 forthwith. Mr... You're good? Okay, so on... I don't see that there's anyone else in the queue or no more requests, so why don't we, Madam Clerk, open the roll?
Excuse me, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Alarcon wanted to call item 22 special.
Oh, you know what? That's my mistake. If we could hold that... So now let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Okay. With that said, Mr. Garcetti, welcome to you and your guests.
Thank you very, very much. Mr. President, I have two presentations, and I'm pinch-hitting after that very briefly for Mr. Labange as well. Two very exciting presentations, and I thank all the folks from Tech for their patience that they're going to be in our second presentation. But I'm very pleased to stand here with our Chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, Jose Wezar, and representatives from the mayor's office who are holding these great signs to kick off the Green Angel Challenge for Los Angeles City employees. So everybody on this side of the horseshoe, this is a challenge for you, too. On March 1, next Thursday, the mayor will ask all city employees to help not only make our city facilities a greener space, but also shape the city's budget in a positive way by conserving energy and water use in city facilities. Now, when I arrive at work, sometimes I look over at my neighbor, I won't mention Mr. Englander by name, and I see that his plug is plugged in there even if his computer is not. That's called an energy vampire, and we can save cents by making sure. And so sometimes, just to help Mr. Englander, who I won't mention by name again, I'll just unplug that, saving him, us, and all of us money and electricity. This is great for our environment. It's good for our taxpayers. Yeah, we'll recognize you soon, don't worry. And the city depends on more than $50 million in water... Sorry, spends more than $50 million on water, and by making simple changes in our everyday routine, city employees can achieve substantial savings. So we are asking all of the city's employees, too. One, turn off electronic equipment when you leave for the day. Two, unplug electronics to reduce phantom loads. And three, to report leaking faucets. These are common sense measures, and I know that we can meet this challenge together. And I just want to show a few of the great things. You see them here, but we have these stickers, sink your teeth into power savings, eliminate vampire power use. Here, report government leaks, right? Government leaks when we have our faucets. Be an angel and turn off the lights. And then, as you can see in these posters, and I'll show them here, too, lights on when you're off, useless. Power on when you're off, also useless. And now, these two are my favorites, both male and female, boys and girls. Flush before you go, useless. And I'm just going to read to you that, okay, this is a little embarrassing, but it came to our attention, we won't mention how, that some people flush the toilet before they go, even when the water is clean. It's a real waste, so let's stop that out. I'm not mentioning any names, Mitch Englander. All right. So lastly, and we don't have a lot of showers, but we do have some city showers, showering after you're clean. As a Navy guy, I know proper shower is you get wet, you turn it off, and you rinse off. We can all save money in our city showers that we have as well by trying to make those as quick as possible. And I just, I want to say, on a serious note, Mitch Englander has been a great friend to the environment, all kidding aside, but another friend who is here, who is our Chair of Energy and Environment Committee. Say a few words. I'd like to pass the microphone over to Jose Wezar, our Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Councilmember Garcetti, and thank you for your work on conservation. And as the new Chair of Energy and Environment, I'm committed to working with our city departments on innovative solutions, on helping conserve energy and create greener standards for our entire city. The Green Angel Challenge is pretty straightforward, as Councilmember Garcetti said. It encourages city employees to save energy and help reduce the city's budget deficit by taking some simple actions and helping our environment. In many ways, it's about common sense. Those things you learned as a kid, turn off lights when you leave a room. Mitch Englander, turn off your computer when you leave your desk. And also to do other things that will help our environment. And we shouldn't be asking anything of the public that we shouldn't do ourselves as a great city. In fact, we should aim to do even more, and that's what I like about this campaign. It is recognizing that we, as a city organization, have a responsibility to do more and be the rule on conserving energy and not the exception. And although a lot of what we're talking about seems like small insignificant things, collectively, with thousands of city employees working together, those small efforts add up to big results and will have a direct impact on reducing our debt and helping our environment. I would like to give a special recognition and thanks to all the people who have worked on this project, from the mayor's staff and the Department of Water and Power, and particularly to Lorraine Paskett, Senior Assistant General Manager of the Department of Water and Power, and also to Beth Jines from the mayor's office as well. And finally, I know Councilmember Tom Labange is not here today, but if he were here, he would say he would like to see more green angels in the city of angels. So thank you very much. And, Mr. Garcetti, this, too, is my favorite. It reminds me of my four-year-old son as he's running to the bathroom. So thank you very much, and let's conserve more. This is a great project, and we, as a city, should lead by example for the rest of the public. Thank you so much.
And now from the mayor's office. I'm sorry, Mitch Englander, we don't have any time for other council members, but Beth Jines is going to say a few things in the mayor's office.
Good morning. Beth Jines, the Director of Sustainability in the mayor's office. I just want to thank the council members for their continued leadership on environmental issues and also be willing to help with this important campaign to reduce our energy and water uses. One of the things I do want to mention also is that we will be using the green workforce that Council President Wesson was instrumental in performing to do some of the postings and to also help with some of the inspections of our facilities to make sure that the rules are being complied with. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you on this campaign.
Thank you. Shall I go to my second presentation now?
If Mr...
All right, I'll give Mr. Englander a chance.
If Mr. Englander agrees, you should saw the look in his eye.
Just for the rebuttal, you know, I wanted to just recognize the campaign and say, this is wonderful. I've done a lot around my own home, and I don't just talk about it and preach it. I live it with not only solar but a lot of other efficiencies that I've done at home. But I like the fact that Mr. Wezar has become a vampire now, that his true colors have finally come out. And I believe that this weekend, there may be a full moon, so stay away from Mr. Wezar. Mr. Garcetti, I really appreciate that you've brought this to the council. This is critically important. I'm not sure that it's appropriate to use your mayoral campaigns here, the useless campaign slogan in council chambers, but given the fact that it's got dual messages, I think at this point, we'll overlook that and allow it, and I appreciate that you brought this to everybody's attention.
Appreciate it. Just remember to flush after you go, Mr. Englander.
I prefer a cling ball. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. I have a second presentation now, and I'd like to invite my friends from Tech to come forward to join me here today. I think many people mispronounce the restaurant Tay. It's actually Tech's, which is in my council district. My father told me the story of Tech's when I was growing up, because as a young man growing up in a pretty poor household in South Los Angeles, my father joined at Washington High School the Business Club. And the first nice meal he ever went to in a fine restaurant, he said he was taken by a businessman, and the Business Club was taken out. I think he was a junior in high school. And they went to Tech's, back in the old location. But today, we celebrate an incredible landmark. For those of us who live in the 13th Council District and for people who come from around this city and beyond, to have one of the finest experiences in dining and hospitality, we know that Tech's is the place to go. And we are honoring three employees, and get this, when we're told in this day and age that most of us will have five or six careers in our life, when the average stay in most jobs is a few years, we are celebrating three Tech's employees who are celebrating 50 years of employment with the restaurant each. In 1962, Dodgers Stadium opened at Chavez Ravine. Astronaut John Glenn became the first to orbit the Earth. The Beatles released their hit song, "Love Me Do," and Bernard and Jose, who are here, started working at Tech's Restaurant, now located in Echo Park. 50 years later, they are celebrating five decades of employment at this Los Angeles institution. And we also have Fernando with us as well. So Fernando Gomez, Bernard in Chaupsee, and Jose Fragaso. Let me tell you about them. Jose Fragaso was born, one of six children, in El Presidio, Mexico, in the state of Durango. As a young person, he enjoyed horseback riding, fishing, and hunting. In 1959, Jose immigrated to Los Angeles to join his brother Gilbert, who was working at the original Tech's Restaurant in downtown Los Angeles. In 1962, the Tech's family opened its current location on Sunset Boulevard, where Jose joined the banquet staff. In 1969, he married his wife Norma. They have a son, daughter, and one granddaughter. Today, he manages an estimated 2,000 events annually, and over his 50 years at Tech's, he's managed 100,000 banquets. Let's give a round of applause to Jose Fragaso. Fernando Gomez was born in Temblé, Argentina, where he spent his youth on his family's farm with his brother Manuel. In his late teens, Fernando worked for Firestone Tires while attending Economic University in Buenos Aires. In his early twenties, he traveled to Los Angeles via Miami along with two friends, working for Bullock's Wilshire and then a local furniture company. He also joined a semi-pro soccer league and played for the L.A. Kickers before joining the staff at the Echo Park Tech's location when it opened in 1962. Fernando and his wife Delia have been married since 1965. They have three daughters, three grandsons, and one granddaughter. His presence behind the bar has been a welcome sight for many Tech's patrons over the last 50 years. I think Mr. Zion has been spied there more than one time. And we love the hospitality that Fernando gives, the warm smile and the way that he is able to serve a great drink. Please give Fernando Gomez a great round of applause as well. And then there's Bernard. Bernard in Chaupsee was born in the Basque region of France, in the town of Echardie, and raised on a farm where his parents taught him the value of hard work. Bernard so often serves me when I'm at Tech's and is just the consummate gentleman. He is a constituent of my own as well, living in Atwater Village. But as a young man, he enjoyed riding his bike around town. As he grew into a young man, he replaced his bicycle with a motorcycle. In 1962, Bernard married his wife Grace, and they moved to California where they were both hired as servers at the original Tech's Restaurant in downtown. They lived upstairs at the Hotel Champdor, or Champdor, until the restaurant's Echo Park location opened. During his 50 years at Tech's, Bernard has served as a waiter and as a bartender. Now they currently live in Glendale. They have one daughter and two granddaughters. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for Bernard in Chaupsee as well. And I would like to present to each of them, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, our congratulations on behalf of serving so many Angelenos for so long. You know that Tech's is one of the last unionized restaurants left in Los Angeles, and it shows what sort of stability you have when you have a great family, the Tech's family, and Mike Tech's is here, I can ask him to say a couple words, when you have a great workforce, and in a town where everybody thinks a waiter is just an actor struggling, that this is a real profession, and that as waiters and as servers and as bartenders, you really set the bar for all of us. So congratulations first to Bernard.
Thank you.
Secondly, to Fernando. And third, to Jose.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, council chambers. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize three very important employees, amongst many. A quick little story about the restaurant. We have dedicated ourselves to the city, become kind of a landmark and a labor of love of sorts. We have a number of employees that are virtually the backbone of the restaurant itself. We have 17 or 18, I believe 18 employees with a combined service of 600 years, which in today's day and age is unbelievable for any business, much less a restaurant. The success of the restaurant itself is because of these employees, and we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize these particular three gentlemen, these special gentlemen, and all of our employees. So to that, thank you very much, council, and good day. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Garcetti. I think the entire council would like to thank you, you know, Tay's Tech's. I mean, you answered that question.
Thank you very much.
It's my understanding that Mr. Labange has some guests that are here that you're going to recognize as well. One more round of applause.
Just two introductions I'd like to make and quick presentations. We have two folks that Mr. Labange, our great ambassador, who could not be with us today, is welcoming to the city of Los Angeles. First, Tolis, if you'd like to come up. Tolis Aristedu is here. Gold Star Alumni Tour is a big deal for the Department of State, and we're so pleased and honored that Tolis is coming back to Los Angeles. As we know, Athens is our sister city, has been since 1984. During the Olympics, we twinned our two cities. And Tolis is the director and exclusive organizer of the Battle of the Year Balkans, a Balkan-wide breakdance competition that takes place every spring in Thessaloniki, as well as the annual Battle of the Best competition in Athens. He's been especially successful in giving inner-city youth in major Greek cities a positive outlet for the social pressures of their lives and a strong alternative to violence and delinquent behavior. Since his visit to the United States in 2009, he's collaborated with the connections that he made here. As a Gold Star Alumni, we celebrate his positive accomplishments that have strengthened his work and the ties between our two countries. And so on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, also known in Spanish as el pueblo de nuestra señora, la arena de los Ángeles, we want to extend you our warmest wishes and hopes that you will visit us again. Please give Tolis a round of applause. Thank you for your patience as well. And then secondly, Carlinos Brown. Come on up. Carlinos is here from another sister city of ours, Salvador... Carlinos is here from another sister city of ours, Salvador de Bahia in Brazil, which has been our sister city since 1962. And he is here not just as a great person from our sister city, but as a nominee for an Oscar for the best song. "Real in Rio," for all of us who saw the great movie Rio. "Real in Rio" was a song that he is a part of, that is nominated, and that will be rooting for this Sunday at the Academy Awards. He's a first Academy Award nominations for himself and Sergio Méndez, who he is nominated with. He's a Brazilian musician, songwriter, and record producer from, as I mentioned, Salvador de Bahia. His musical style blends tropicalia, reggae, and traditional Brazilian percussion. And he founded Timbalada and Tribalistas. He's a solo artist, a great musician, a great ambassador, and from our own sister city. We also wanted to welcome you and give you this certificate of recognition from the Council President, myself, and Council Member Labonge. Thank you for your friendship and all that you have done. Long live music and the friendship between Salvador and Los Angeles.
Councilman Garcetti, you do have one person on the queue.
Okay.
Councilor Alacón. Councilor Alacón.
Richard. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just-- Yeah, having a four-year-old daughter, I can tell you that we thoroughly enjoyed the movie Rio, because, you know, obviously, it's animated. But, you know, having a four-year-old daughter gives you an excuse to go to see movies that you otherwise wouldn't go to. So I think I actually liked the movie more than she did. But part of it, that you cannot separate the music from the movie, because it actually makes the movie, you feel like you're actually in Brazil. And it's a beautiful country. I did have the opportunity to visit Brazil about five or six years ago with my wife, and what a beautiful country. It has its challenges, as all countries do, but what a beautiful culture. And of course, the music. Brazil is the music. So congratulations. I'm, you know, as politicians, we're not supposed to be biased, but I'm supporting you, and I'll take whatever pain comes with that, because it's one of the most pleasurable movies we were able to see with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Alacón. And Councilman Garcetti, if I may, I just also want to thank all the artists. And we look at this great diversity in this city. What we have is an amazing umbilical cord that connects throughout this world, and this is a great example of how the arts connects us. In particular, I want to acknowledge J. Michael Walker. He did this book called All the Saints of the City of L.A. And he's there in the crowd with you. Just raise your hand, Michael. As part of this talent that we have in the city, you've got great historic background on the different streets, named after the saints, but also the diversity we have in this great city. So again, thank you, Councilman Garcetti, for bringing forward such amazing talent. Congratulations.
Alacón. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I don't speak English good, but to me, all the world want speak little Portuguese. Because o Brasil é um país de responsabilidades.
Brazil is a country of responsibilities.
Como os Estados Unidos.
Has the United States.
Tem sido.
Has been.
É o seu falou sobre a política e a música.
You spoke of politics and music.
Pois é. Acho que os músicos, os médicos, os políticos.
I believe that the musicians, the politicians, and the medical profession.
Os bombeiros.
The firefighters.
Nós somos todos servidores.
We are all servicemen.
Nós servimos a uma comunidade enorme.
We serve a huge community.
Que é a comunidade humana.
That is the human community.
Cada um dentro da sua possibilidade.
All of us within our own possibilities.
E hoje, num grau enorme de gratidão e felicidade.
And today I am filled with gratitude.
É as cidades irmãs, Los Angeles e Salvador.
To the sister cities of Los Angeles and Salvador.
Concretizam 50 anos.
For their 50th year anniversary.
Eu escrevi aqui para não esquecer.
I wrote down a few words so as not to forget.
É porque alguém lá atrás promoveu isso.
Because someone back there promoted this.
E o nome dele é Tom Bradley.
And his name is Tom Bradley.
E pelo que eu vi falar, era um prefeito negro.
From what I've heard, he was of African descent.
E quando eu falo isso, porque Salvador Bahia foi aonde nasceu o Brasil.
And when I say that, it's because Salvador Bahia was where Brazil was born.
E ela é considerada a cidade africana, latina.
And it is considered the city, the African city of Brazil.
É. E o nosso conceito de África, acho que é igual como a gente vê aqui nos Estados Unidos. É de missa e geração, é de junção das etnias, é de igualdade e diversidade.
And from our point of view, that is a, that comes from equality and from bringing everyone together.
É. Nesse mesmo tempo, o prefeito de Salvador chamava-se Heitor Dias Pereira.
At the same time, the county, the mayor of Salvador was called Alson Dias Pereira.
É. E o que me dá essa honra enorme, porque isso foi no ano em que nasci. Eu também completo os 50 anos.
And this gives me great honor, because this was the year that I was born. I also am 50 years old.
E nesses 50 anos, as oportunidades entre Los Angeles, Salvador, e o Brasil foram claras.
And in these 50 years, the opportunities between Salvador, Los Angeles, that were all very, very wide shown.
É. Los Angeles abriu as portas para a cultura baiana brasileira.
Los Angeles opens its doors to the culture of Brazil and of Bahia.
Ajudou criar grandes nomes.
Helped to build large and great awareness.
Como Amém, que é um mestre de capoeira.
Esse chef Amém.
Que ensinou a grandes nomes dos filmes, né, de ação e lutas aqui em Hollywood.
That made us aware of great movies of action and fights.
Bacari, que é um dos líderes da nossa comunidade, de cidades irmãs.
Bacari, who is a--
Artista.
A community artist.
Linda Yudin.
Linda Yudin.
Que traduziu e trouxe para as universidades as performances de dança da Bahia, Brasil.
Linda Yudin, who translated and brought the various dances from Salvador Bahia, Brazil.
Então, acredito que hoje, né, com o nosso prefeito, Antonio Villarosa.
Villarosa.
Villarosa. Que nome bonito.
And now with our mayor, Antonio Villarosa. What a beautiful name.
Eu também sou Antonio.
I am Antonio as well.
Acredito que tudo isso nos faz muito agradecidos.
I believe all of this makes us very thankful.
E tenho algo a dizer, senhor. Foi por isso que os anjos resolveram morar aqui.
And I have something to say to you, sir. That is why the angels have decided to live here.
Muitas graças.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that Tolis came here a second time. He originally came in 2009. He was chosen by the U.S. Department of State to come on the International Visitor Leadership Program. And I am Director of the Los Angeles Council, which is the International Visitors Council of Los Angeles. So we're happy to have him back. He was chosen to come again because of all the accomplishments he's done, from the information he got from his original trip. So I'll let Tolis say a few words.
Hello, everybody. I want to thank everyone, and especially the International Visitor Council of Los Angeles, for having me here for a second time. This program is amazing. And with all the meetings I have here in U.S., it helps a lot to improve my organization, back to Greece, and also to change a lot of young people's lives. So thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Linda Yudin, Chair of the Los Angeles Salvador Sister Cities Committee. And on behalf of the committee, we would like to thank the City Council, the Sister Cities Ink Board, and its president, Al Nadell, the Department of Cultural Affairs, Councilman Tom Labonge, a champion of the Los Angeles Sister Cities Organization, and Councilman Eric Garcetti, for bestowing this honor on our dear friend, Carlinos Brown. Carlinos, you have been an inspiration to your community, to your city, and your country since I met you in 1991 in Salvador, as you were beginning to make your musical dreams a reality. You have developed musical genres that speak loudly to a vibrant contemporary world music culture, while always honoring the Afro-Brazilian and indigenous roots of your musical genius. We would like to congratulate you on your nomination by the Motion Picture Academy of Arts and Sciences for your original song, "Real in Rio," in the film Rio, and really hope to see you accept the Oscar on Sunday night. You are daring, independent, a risk-taker, and a peacemaker. Your voice and your music advocate for equality of all people everywhere. You are the sound of Salvador Bahia and the sound of Brazil, and we are thrilled to be able to honor you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, and all your guests. Our next speaker and presenter is Council President Herson.
Mr. President, we'll wait as the delegation leaves. They're the size of a football team. That's a big delegation. Anyway, Mr. President and members, today, we have some special guests with us. Individuals who work for the great county of Los Angeles. Individuals who work in a department that's called the probation department, who every day, they find their work very challenging, but it's one of those departments that we just kind of take for granted, because we really don't see them, because they're working with young juveniles that are having difficulty. They run camps and residential facilities, and they don't have enough money to do what the law really requires them to do. And somehow, some way, they do their very best to get it done. So I'm here to welcome the new chief. And being a former county employee myself, I had to work closely-- in fact, I've worked closely with probation for over 20 years. So it's an honor for me to bring forth the new chief, Chief Powers, Jerry Powers, who was born in the Stockton-Moestow area, went to school in San Diego. I believe first became a probation officer and served in the San Diego area. From there, he went to Stanislaus County, where he served for a number of years. And we were lucky enough here in L.A. County to lure him down here, and I think that was this past November. So I'd like to request that everybody give our chief a round of applause, Chief Jerry Powers. And I also want to thank him for bringing two very high-ranking officers with him. And they have amazing backgrounds themselves. I want to say Sharon Harada has worked for the department, and she's a deputy chief. I want to say she's worked for the department for 21 or over 21 years. Felicia Cotton, another deputy chief, has served Los Angeles County for over 24 years. And this makes up part of the leadership of the county of Los Angeles. Now Sharon, like I said, is a deputy chief, and she's over Juvenile Field Special Services bureaus. And Felicia Cotton is the deputy chief of Juvenile Institution bureaus. With that said, give him another round of applause, and I'm gonna ask the chief to say a few words. Chief Powers. In fact, let's get the picture taken out of the way. Chief, there you. Felipe. You want to be Sharon, Felipe.
Come on.
Come on.
Come up, come up.
Where are you, chief? All right. And Carl Washington, my former colleague from the Assembly, the good Reverend Carl Washington. Chief Powers, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. It's certainly my pleasure to be here in Los Angeles County. I'm finishing up my third month here since I got here. It is a privilege to work in the county. I've already had an opportunity to meet with Chief Beck and Assistant Chief Moore from LAPD. They've been very gracious and welcoming to me, and they're great partners with probation, so I appreciate their support. I have two wonderful administrators behind me that Mr. Wesson acknowledged today, and we appreciate the opportunity to come and see you and be acknowledged by your council. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We do have two speakers on the queue. We have Councilor Zine and Councilor Bustain. Councilor Zine.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson, don't be so hurried. Just relax. Relax. We got some questions. We got some acknowledgements.
I want to go sit in my chair before Mr. Reyes gets too comfortable.
He's gonna get it warmed up for you, but Mr.--
He's going nowhere fast.
Mr. Wesson, you said you were on probation for 20 years? I wrote that down. I'm trying to figure out, what did you do to get on probation for 20 years? Mr. Washington knows. It must have been something evil. But in all seriousness, with realignment of 109, a lot of people have heard 109, 109, 109, the realignment, where 33,000 folks are coming out of the prisons, back to the communities, and a lot of them back to Los Angeles County. You folks are going to be taxed with the responsibility of keeping our population safe. And I know you've been going around, you were at Independent Cities Association, giving a presentation on the task, the obligation, the mission, and the personnel. So I want to commend you all for that challenging task, because there's a whole lot of folks coming out, back into our communities. They don't have jobs. They don't have opportunities. And we need to deal with it in a manner that's going to be responsible for everyone. So the mission that you folks have is incredibly responsible and very, very important. I don't know if the public understands the significance of what happens if it's not properly regulated, what happens to our communities. So I wish you well. And Carl, good seeing you again. And chief, congratulations, coming down to Los Angeles, which is obviously a very busy place. But Mr. Wesson, maybe we can relinquish his probation now.
Thank you.
We'll dismiss him from probation. We're gonna take the-- we're gonna leave the ankle monitor on, though. What I would say is that we will-- you know, LAPD has been a great partner during this AB 109 realignment process, and we're looking forward to future partnerships with them. And we can't do this without all the partners that we have, both in the city and the county. So thank you. And Mr. Wesson, you've worked the county, you've worked the state, you've worked the city. You just haven't been to the feds yet. So that's your next move. All right. Thank you very much.
Councilor Bustain.
Thank you, Mr. President. And chief, congratulations on the appointment. Mr. Wesson, thanks for bringing this to us. And as a police officer just coming out the street, I had the privilege and honor to working with your deputies in numerous task forces. And thanks, Mr. Zine, for bringing up the realignment issue, which is a critical issue, not only facing the city but the state. And my thing is, it's important, chief, when you're making your decisions and providing some resources, especially in my district in Watts, in the Harbor area, when the inmates are released, we need to provide them with resources, whether it's a faith-based resource, job skills, work, labor, bringing them to the table. We just cannot ignore them, because I can truly say that if we don't provide them with adequate resources, once they're released, they will go back to what they know best, and that's committing crime. So with that-- So with that, I just want to stand and just remind us, not only as a city council, but in working with the probation department, to have the key components at the table once they are released. We just cannot ignore them.
Amen. Thank you.
And chief, I just want to take a moment. There was a young man back in the early 90s, his name was Eduardo Cordero. He was a probation officer with the county. And back then, we were responding to the pressures of Pico Union. And he was a significant element in creating a social infrastructure with the parents, with the teachers, the principal. And he was there late at night, he was there on weekends. He was part of a big movement that brought back the sense of peace in parks of Pico Union. So the unsung heroes you have behind you and around you are the individuals that make a difference on the street 24 hours, seven days a week, and that cannot be underappreciated. So I want to celebrate what you do, because many people don't understand what that pressure means when you walk into that living room, when you're dealing with a shooting, when you're dealing with gang members who, and they're not, they don't have guns on them, they don't have bulletproof vests, and they're in the trenches. So for that, I thank you and applaud that heroic work.
Thank you. I'd like a copy of this, please.
Thank you very much.
We'll get you a copy.
Thank you very much.
Council members, I'd like to invite Councilmember Wezar and Garciari. And of course, Mr. Reyes is standing by my side. And Congressman Esteban Torres, if you could come forward, please.
And I know, Mr. Alarcon, we don't have a lot of people now in the audience, but council members, this is a great public service. Let's give Congressman Torres a round of applause. He served this city, this country, this state well, and it's good to see you, sir.
Council members, it's a little-known, dirty historical fact in the United States that over 1 million Mexicans, Mexican-Americans were deported illegally from this country. They were United States citizens, many of whom were born in this country and had never been to Mexico, were taken off in the middle of the night and deported out of the United States. And so item number 22 is a resolution to support efforts by MALDEF, the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, to educate people about this part of our history. The fact is, we believe that less than half of those people were able to return to the United States, and many chose not to return to the United States. And it tore up families, it destroyed communities, and it was all done with full participation of government entities. So MALDEF is on a crusade to get an apology to those of Mexican heritage who were United States citizens and nevertheless were deported from their own country. So I'd like to recognize MALDEF for their tenacity in fighting for this recognition of our history.
Mr. Alarcon, I hate to break into your speech, but I think we need to make a quick adjustment. And Madam Clerk, let's hear item 22. And once we get on that item, it will be appropriate for you to finish your statement. So now, we're on item 22. All right, I got the thumbs up. Go, Richard.
Are we? Okay. So we want to recognize MALDEF for their efforts to inform people, and the goal is not just to seek an apology, but also to provide in our public education system the opportunities for students to understand this as our history. We cannot move forward as a nation without understanding the truth. Our democracy relies on the truth to be able to make us strong. And this is a true fact, and hopefully, we would never want to see this happen to anybody again. I can tell you, in terms of my own history, that my parents were not, they wanted us to speak English, because they were fearful, because they were raised during these days. And while they may not have known the specific history, they were concerned that their kids might be deported someday if they didn't speak English with a high degree of accuracy. So we want to recognize, first of all, MALDEF, and secondly, there's a tremendous artistic interpretation of this period that is being prepared by La Plaza de Cultura y Artes in Los Angeles. And that brings us to Congressman Esteban Torres, who is on the Board of Directors of this organization. This organization was chosen to depict in a mural this history. And so, without further ado, I really would like for the congressman to tell us of his history with this issue and what the work of La Plaza, and to educate us as to what is going on. Congressman.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. President, members of the council. Today, it's a great honor and special privilege to come before you, to receive this accolade by the city councilmen that have supported this resolution. Specifically, I speak of Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Wezar. As Mr. Alarcon has just stated to you, this was a despicable act of our government, who oftentimes commits these kinds of issues that impinge on the freedom and the civil rights of so many people. In this case, in 1929, when the Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Labor, through its Bureau of Immigration sought out Mexicans specifically, to deport them, either voluntarily or by force, to Mexico. As the councilman has just indicated to you, at least 2 million, 2 million Americans, 2 million persons, rather, in the United States were deported to Mexico. At least 0.12 million of those were American citizens. Now, think about that. American citizens being deported to another country from which they didn't even know the language or had never lived in. Today, the city council's action commemorates the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund for pursuing this issue in our legislatures and across the country, to make sure that our governments are cognizant of this great problem that took place in the early 30s at the depth of the U.S. Depression. I want to indicate at this time, as Councilman Alarcon indicated, I am the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the organization La Plaza de Cultura y Artes, a cultural organization not too far, walking distance from here, located by the Placita near Olvera Street. It is an institution, a foundation, if you will, that has been created by various private sector individuals, individuals, to highlight the contributions of the Mexican-American community to the building Los Angeles, beginning with the 44 families that came here from Mexico in the early 1700s. The Plaza is proud to receive this commemoration, honoring the fact that we will be placing a commemorative plaque in our Plaza headquarters to not celebrate, but to recognize the victims of this heinous issue that took place, including memorializing the victims and those of the survivors, many of which are probably still here in this city. In my own case, I was born in Arizona, and I was born in a small mining camp in the city of Miami, Arizona, a copper-mining city. I was three years old, and my father never came home that evening. I found out later to my mother that the Bureau of Immigration had raided the mine, rounded up all the Mexicans without notice, put them on buses, and shipped them back to Mexico. And I never saw my father again, never saw him. Those were hard times for my family, my mother, my grandmother, my smaller brother, to be set with this kind of situation. We struggled our way through the Great Depression, horrible circumstances I can't go into because of the depth of the economy at that time and the discrimination that we suffered. We eventually moved to California, to East Los Angeles, where I was raised, and continued my education and a career that I'm very proud of. So today, I want to thank the city council, I want to thank the mayor, Mr. Villarreal Rivas, the comptroller, Mr. Santana, for encouraging and supporting this resolution. And I want to thank all of you for promoting this and for authorizing it. I might say, just a personal note, that on the 26th of February, which is Sunday, the Plaza de Cultura y Artes will hold a commemoration honoring this particular date. February the 26th, when down here, not far from here, at the Placita, the Bureau of Immigration surrounded the park, there were hundreds of people there. They surrounded the park, aided by the police department, and one by one, they scrutinized everybody that was in that park. Eventually, they carted off dozens and dozens of people who couldn't verify their status here. So it was really a horrible act that took place, and it was continued by and continually throughout Los Angeles. So once again, Mr. President, I thank the council, I thank my colleagues behind me here, and for this great honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmembers Alarcon and Wezar, for allowing this moment. It is an honor, Congressman, to stand here with you, to be able to personalize and articulate a history that's very painful, but very real in this great country. The irony is that this country is built on its diversity. Our strength and our future will be our relationships with countries throughout the world, this new world economy, yet we still have a mindset that fails to see the significance of this diversity. But the seasonal punitive legislation that hurts people of color, and in this instance, the Mexican-American, is not new. 1856 documented Colorado County in Texas, the whole county is raided by the immigration federal forces, and the whole county disappears because they are consisting of Mexican and Mexican-Americans. 1950, Rio Grande Valley, Texas Rangers come and raid the whole valley and deport thousands and thousands of Mexicanos and Americans of Mexican descent. 1920s, 1930s, the deportation due to the Depression, again, economic conditions develop this mindset that says it's us versus them, regardless of their American citizenry, and continues to deport Mexicans. 1952, President Eisenhower begins Operation Wetback because of an article in the New York Times that says the Mexicans are crossing in thousands, we have to deport the wetbacks, and Operation Wetback begins. Again, the darkness of this history is real, the punitive measures and disregard for our civil rights is real, and yet today, like in Arizona, they choose to eliminate ethnic studies that would echo these real facts, so we can learn from them. So our struggle is here, now and today. So I thank Congressman Torres for his presence, I thank the Mexican-American Legal Defense Education Fund, not only to save our sense of self-esteem and future of our kids, but also for the sake of our ability to move in an economic realm that embraces the international economy and builds on the strength of this great diversity. Why we continue to punish ourselves as Americans is beyond me, but we need to continue having these events and continue reminding people the path towards the truth and understand the past to strengthen the future for our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And I want to, it's a great honor to be standing here with a legend, really, Congressman Torres, who has done so much for working people throughout the country and for all Americans. And we were proud not too long ago to open up one of the first new high schools in the east side for, in decades, and we were very proud to have named that after a great congressman. So it's really an honor to be here with you, Congressman. And as was mentioned, you know, one can only imagine the sheer terror and horror that families felt when this occurred. And it's really a time in our country that has gotten very little attention. And this episode, and what happened to these families, has gotten very little attention in our textbooks and has not been noted the way it should be. And that's why I want to thank MALDEF and those who are pursuing this issue to ensure that justice is brought not only to these families, but that we continue to open our eyes about some of the injustices that need clarification for all of us. It not only benefits Mexicans who are deported, but it benefits all ethnicities and all Americans if we correct this injustice, because injustice done to one group is an injustice done to all. One of the great things about our great country that we live in is that we have liberty and we have a United States Constitution that has defended against some injustices. Whether it was the Japanese internment, or making sure that we got rid of Jim Crow laws in the South, we have fought back to ensure that we identify those injustices and we clarify them for future generations not to repeat them. And that's why what MALDEF is doing is so, so important. It's not just for Mexicans, it's for all of us. So I thank MALDEF, I thank the congressman, the mayor's office, and Councilmember Alarcon for bringing this to our attention. We have a lot more work to do, and let's not repeat history. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar. Just briefly, I want to thank Mr. Alarcon as well and MALDEF, and what an honor it is to be here with the congressman. Thank you for your words, Mr. Reyes, as well. You know, when we, Mr. Parks brought to us a few years ago the issue of reparations here for African-Americans who were enslaved. And I think what Mr. Parks mentioned is it's difficult to go forward into the future until you recognize the past. And similarly here, I mean, here we are, celebrating our history, we see it as a strength. We have a Spanish and a Mexican flag here in these chambers. Our city seal has the four countries we've been a part of, the United States, the California Republic, Mexico and Spain, right here before us, and we recognize that that has been a strength of who we are and what we are about. Like Congressman Torres, my family is intertwined with him in a small mining town in Arizona when my grandmother, whose parents were from Sonora, came and grew up in Superior. 19 children to the same two parents, and my great-grandmother was done at 37, so you do the math. A good Catholic family. And yet, I know that the family moved here because of the fear that they faced and that they had seen after the raids. And so many of them came here to Boyle Heights, where my grandfather, who had emigrated as well from Mexico, was living at the time, and my grandmother and grandfather met here. We stand here in front of a council member whose grandfather was a laborer on this very same building as a Mexican migrant, day laborer. Jose Wezar's grandfather helped lay the stones of this building we are in today. And when the families that went back and forth between these borders, sometimes willingly, sometimes unwillingly, we must face that past in order to face the future. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
I just wanted to say thank you to the congressman, the congressman for sharing your personal story. You're, to me, the living embodiment of overcoming adversity, and I think you stand as a role model for many, many generations, myself included, of people who've been in the harshest of circumstances and have risen to exceed probably even their own expectations. And the Plaza is a gift to the entire city, and I would argue even to the country, to teach people about our own California history, the good and the bad, and to provide children with an opportunity to continue to learn, to understand from whence they came and where we're going. So thank you very much for sharing that with us today.
Mr. Alarcon.
So with, I do have certificates of recognition to MALDEF, to La Plaza de Cultura y Artes, and the Rabin Group, which is the... y Artes, and the Raven Group, which is the consultants who are promoting this issue with Maldef. It's just devastating to me to think that somebody would lose their father at the age of three, and I'm just thinking of all the years I had with my father after the age of three, and, you know, our heart goes out to you and the 1.2 million people who were torn from their families at this time. But I think it is, it is true. I want to thank my colleagues, their comments were eloquent and I think they capture the spirit of this. So with that, I would move the resolution, item 22, and ask for your I-vote.
We'll just have to delay it for a bit. We've got Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very, very, very significant what you all said. You know, we go through a lot of presentations, a lot of programs, we're looking and multitasking, and half the time we're not even listening. Could help but not listen, because this is something we should never forget. We talk about it all the time when it comes to the Holocaust. Never forget. But we need to never forget any injustice, any immorality, any genocide of any person in this great city, in this great nation, in this great world. And frankly, tearing up families is wrong. And, you know, I just hate to say this, but so many people think they're privileged and this is their country. It's everybody's country. In fact, before we were here, the Indians were here, and before the white folk conquered, the Latinos, Mexico, went all the way up through a half a dozen different states and was Mexico. And so when you take a deep appreciation of all of humanity, you cannot help but say, never forget any injustice, any tearing up of any family, and to see my colleagues here who are clearly representing an energy in the community of where actions have taken place that make absolutely no moral sense, but it's the politics of insanity that sends to, to, to cause people's negativity and fear. It's self-fear, it's self-preservation, it's not an appreciation that we're all connected, that the spirit is in all of us as people, and it's the same spirit. And if we can appreciate the dignity, and frankly, what I would say, the God in all of us, the love in all of us, and take that to the next level, we can never forget an injustice and we should do everything in our power to make the world a better place. And I want to thank you, Congressman, for your story, but especially my colleagues for putting your heart out there and letting us all realize that we should never forget any kind of injustice. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. In the Valley, we have Rick Nightingale. He wants to comment on this issue. Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Now, I read the paper and I didn't realize what happened. Just the same as the Asian people or the Japanese people, they rounded them up and so forth. And it was a tragedy, and people did get taken away from their families. But, there's always a but. They were doing it for the good of the country back then. They didn't realize what they were doing, the government was trying to take care of us, the government was very strong back then, not as today, the way things are with the sanctuary city of Los Angeles. That our government here in the city of Los Angeles does not obey the law. It's a reverse situation that is going on right now. I believe that if the law says one thing, it's good for all. Like everything that was talked about today, it was a tragedy. But back then, you could come over the border back and forth, back in the 20s, 30s and 40s, and there's nobody to stop you. So it was so open that I don't understand what the big thing was back then. But today, look at what our City Council is doing about having a sanctuary city. They're not protecting the American citizens that are here legally and so forth. There are laws, we're supposed to obey the laws, but what gives you people the privilege of disobeying the laws to your own benefit? I don't understand this. This is why so many people are upset with you people. That's the reason, is that you people are, think you're privileged, and it's not fair. That's all there is to it. Thank you.
Mr. Nightingale, we want to thank you for making Mr. Alarcon's point. With that said, can we, on this item, open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
All right, Mr. Alarcon. Congressman, great to see you. I've been handed a note from Mr. Sacks. We've got a couple of students here from USC. Do we? Raise your hand. Welcome, welcome to the council. Okay, and to Michael, Arnold and Rick in the Valley. I'm gonna just do some quick procedural things and then I'll get to public comment. Just give me two minutes and I think we'll be done. Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe on item one, Mr. Zine is going to request that item one be continued. Mr. Zine?
Yes, Mr. President, continued item number one to Wednesday, February 29th, please.
Without objection. On item two, it's my understanding that Mr. Buscaino has a motion.
Yes, Mr. President, that motion has been circulated.
Okay, on that, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, on items six through eight, those documents have been received. So let's open the roll on item six. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
I'm sorry to be doing your job, Madam Clerk, but let's do the same now on item seven. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We're gonna do the same thing on item eight. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All righty. With that said, I want to go to public comment. I've got Michael Carrion, Arnold Sacks, and Rick Nightingale in the Valley. So Michael, you're up first, Arnold, you're second, and Mr. Nightingale, you're the cleanup hitter in the Valley. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. Funny that my council member sits here for all the proclamations and everything, but he runs off for public comment. Half of the stuff he was saying that happened, happens here in CD-14. This is still being, this is still going on in CD-14. You guys talk about saving energy. In CD-14, Mr. Uizar leaves his lights on 24 hours a day, and he sits here and gets an award, gets a little certificate, because he unplugs his computer. His lights are off, on, in his office 24/7. Number two, he is conserving energy because the signal lights, the streetlights, there's 68 of them out on Huntington Drive in Soto that he won't repair. Why? He's too busy spending his money on North Broadway. Bring Back Broadway, I'm sorry. Injustice. You guys talk about injustice, how it's happening to us, still happening today, and yet the people who talked about it are too busy taking pictures. And I like the way Mr. Rosendahl put it. Injustice to one is injustice to all. So while Mr. Uizar's taking everything from CD-14 and putting it in Boyle Heights and in Bring Back Broadway, he's doing injustice to the people of Boyle Heights, of Alcerino. He's doing injustice to the people of Eagle Rock. He's got, he's got employees here who haven't done anything, who haven't returned calls. I called Mr. Uizar on February the 5th. I got a return call from his secretary that he would call me back in 15 minutes because he was out in the field. I'm still waiting for that call. So I guess the fruit doesn't fall far from the tree. So it's good to know that he comes in after he has his lunch. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks. Oh, wait, before, Arnold, before you come, Mr. Uizar.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to, if they're just tuning in for the first time, that we, my office is always available, we are always here to talk. In fact, the Speaker was sitting there for some time, I'm always available to speak with him, my office is always available to speak with him. But one thing I do ask anybody is that if you approach, we deal with people professionally, they treat my office professionally, and that's a demeanor that I think we could come up with some solutions. And if you're tuning in for the first time, the Speaker who just spoke is here at every meeting, and we're always available. Thank you.
No, Michael, there's no response, no debate, you talk to him on the side. Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks, please, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You've done it again. On Wednesday, when you had all the kids here for your amendment to the Truancy Act, I believe Councilman Cardenas said we had speakers heard in committee, but we'd like to continue speakers here in council. You have three items on your agenda today that were heard in committee, you had a couple cards, you couldn't hear them. That's just what standards you have here. But speaking of awards that were given out and phantom powers for using, not using energy efficiently, Councilman Reyes, if anybody knows about phantom powers, well, he sat on a phantom committee, because he resigned, according to this article on the 15th. He resigned from the committee that the state authority, they found a potential clash. But since the authority hadn't been authorized until October, how could he resign before it even existed? We don't know. And Councilman Zine, I'm glad to hear you bring up realignment regarding AB 109, because the County Board of Supervisors talked about that, and back in October, the mayor and the chief of police both mentioned that they would need, excuse me, approximately 250 more police to oversee the release of all the people that were being let out of the state prisons. So has that discussion come up in front of the council or in any of the committees? I don't think so. And by the way, just to change the subject a little bit, maybe yesterday's sports page you might have read about the Kings and the new arena. They're leasing the parking garages, they expect to raise between $190 and $230 million. Wasn't the city gonna do something about parking garages? But it was only about $90 million. And one more thing, please, in the Orange County Register...
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. In the Valley, we go to Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale, regarding this illegals on your driver's licenses. I was at the meeting when, out here in the San Fernando Valley regarding BEC was here, and they had that big thing regarding this, and everybody says we don't want unlicensed drivers. But just I have a very good friend of mine, he's illegal, and his cousin got in an accident. And none of you people say that they do have insurance that they can buy. It's called ACES, A-C-E-S-S. That's only one of the companies that you can buy insurance. Now, if you people are so great about having them get driver's license, why is it when, this is the capital of people coming here to visit from all over the world and they drive all over here, do you impound their car when they have their driver's license, whatever country they're from? I don't think so. So why do you tow people's car from Mexico? And then they have insurance to prove it. They have a driver's license, they have insurance, so they should be legal to drive. But no, you don't fight for that, because that's not good for what you're trying to push. But look, we got BEC, we got the mayor, we got all the Hispanic councilmen there, we got our city attorney, fighting for, oh, this is not right for them. There's another problem that you just lie, lie, lie. If you're so gung ho, why don't you get that fixed or put it in your rules that you're not gonna tow them if they have insurance and they have a driver's license from Mexico? So it's all bull that you're trying to push it all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. That should conclude public comment, am I correct? Okay, then, if I am, just nod, Madam Clerk, all right. Now, where's Mr. Buscaino? Then let's bring up item number 18. It's my understanding you had a clarifying amendment or what have you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. The C amendment needs to, just to clarify that, the reward should be for the max amount of $50,000, not $75,000. That's all.
Okay. On that item, then, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, at this time, I'm calling, I'm gonna call Mr. Sacks to please begin heading this way. We're gonna do, Mr. Sacks, item 11 and item 17. So with that said, it's still good morning, so good morning and welcome, Arnold.
Yeah, no, no, a quick meeting there was, real control over the amount of time spent on the presentations.
No, you're gonna speak to this item. No, wait a minute, Arnold, here, listen, hold this time. You want to speak on item 11, I will let you speak on, speak on item 11. This is not your opportunity to do wisecracks on our presentations. So speak on 11 or forfeit your time.
Wow. Item number 11. This is the Bureau of Sanitation, and you're continuing item number 10, which is the Bureau of Sanitation. This $1,080,000 grant to purchase 36 heavy-duty natural gas-powered vehicles, solid resource collection vehicles. I'm assuming those are for picking up trash, solid resources, or maybe you could clarify that. It claims here there's no negative financial impact on the general fund, but I can't imagine the 36 vehicles, each vehicle costing approximately $30,000, because 36 times 3,000, $30,000, that's even higher. Well, that's just about $1,080,000. So the fact that you need to come up with the funding, where is the funding for the purchase of the vehicles? This just seems to be that this $1,000,000 is used to shuffle some paperwork around so that you can get this grant approved. And there is no timeline to allow for the purchase of these vehicles, or maybe that's included in some information that isn't privy to the public at this time or part of this motion. So could you contain, contain that within the item on the agenda so the public could be aware that, well, we're gonna buy these 36 vehicles between 2012 and 2014, 2012 and 2020, 2012 and whenever? Because based on the actions that you take and the blah, 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 and I should be speaking on what item you say, item number 12, because I understand, I can see the council members all paying attention, and if I go off course and start speaking about public comment in the presentation thereof, then I'll be yelled at. So thank you very much for your time and attention, Mr. President, and that was a quick hour and a half for your presentation this morning.
Okay, now you're being, you're being, you're being cute. All right, Mr. Sacks. Your time is over. You know what, here, I'm gonna let you come, we're gonna take item 11 and I believe it's item 17, and we'll loop them together, so come on and say your, whatever it is you want to say right now. It just better not be regarding presentations.
Can you set my time?
No, just go on, I'll...
He just called 17.
Go on, I'll take care of you. Just talk.
Item 17 refers to the Venice Art Walls Program, and again, a portion of street furniture revenue designated to pay for this. Because, again, here's another situation that would be perfect for AB 1290 funds, you know, the funds that were returned back to the city for the council members to use for whatever purpose they wanted to. Now, we've had previous meetings with AB 1290 funds used for different things with all these, within all council regions. Why isn't AB 1290 funds being used? And since this refers to art, any of this money comes from transit occupancy tax, because we also know that transit occupancy tax is used, nah, it doesn't even make sense, transit occupancy tax... Transit occupancy tax is used to fund art programs. So is there a source of transit occupancy tax? You know, Anaheim just okayed a hotel project regarding transit occupancy tax, and they told the people who were building the hotel, they would pay for the first 15 years, and then, they would get a free ride on transit occupancy tax. In the city of LA, we give away the transit occupancy tax for 20 years if you're like AEG, and then, you get to collect the money. So, that puts a lot of onus on public artworks. Where does the funding come from? Well, it comes from street furniture. And why does that come, why is that important? Because that's a use of public funds that could be done with something else. Because you're not using AB 1290 funds, because we don't know how much money is available to the AB 1290 funds. We do know, according to Wendy Gruel, that CRA is short $1.4 million. But CRA doesn't allocate 1290 funds. That's allocated by the state. So again, we're left with a situation that'll best be handled in presentations.
Okay, Arnold, it's on. You and me, my friend. Next week, we'll do three days. Okay, with that said, on these two items, can we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Madam Clerk, that brings us to where on today's agenda?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay, members' announcements. Mr., no, just, I was gonna do that, but I'm not. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to invite my constituents to our community swearing-in ceremony tomorrow. We're gonna start with the prayer service in Watts at the Macedonian Baptist Church at 10 o'clock, followed by a 2 o'clock community swearing-in at the Warner Grand, the historic Warner Grand Theater. It's just a celebration to thank the community for coming out and getting me here. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, other announcements? Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind the public that tomorrow, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, more than 260 students from public charter and private high schools throughout Los Angeles will complete, will compete in the LA DWP's 20th Annual Science Bowl Regional Competition. It is gonna be televised on Channel 35, but it'll be taking place at DWP headquarters at 111 North Hope. The winning teams of this competition will travel to Washington DC in April to represent the city and compete at the U.S. Department of Energy's National Science Bowl. And it's important to note that Los Angeles students have won four national titles and placed among the top five teams in this competition 10 times. And the most recent champion was North Hollywood High School. So, I hope everyone will have a chance to either tune in or visit the Science Bowl this year.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This weekend, we'll be doing a Cash for College Scholarship Fair and helping students fill out their college application financial aid forms at Belmont High School. It's open to folks from any high school, students from all over. That's 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Come by, we'll help you fill out your scholarship forms, your FACFIS forms. We've got great volunteers. Cash for College, don't leave that money on the table. Go to college and come to Belmont High School this Saturday. That's tomorrow. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seeing that, Mr. Alacon?
Yes, council members, I wanted to announce that tomorrow, Saturday, February 25th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, I'll be hosting the first Northeast San Fernando Valley Gospel Fest at the New Christ Memorial Church in Pacoima. The Free Gospel Fest Celebration, which will be emceed by special guest CBS Channel 2 anchor, Pat Harvey. And it's the final event in a series of Black History Month community gatherings hosted by my office. By the way, New Christ Memorial Church is pastored by Andre and Sandra Crouch, famous, internationally famous and recognized gospel performers. Of course, they did "We Are the World," we're all familiar with that song. Additionally, there is a 2:00 PM press conference preceding the Gospel Fest program, and we'll discuss the important role of African-American community in the history of the Northeast San Fernando Valley, as well as the, the impact of gospel music on the Northeast San Fernando Valley. So that will be at New Christ Memorial Church at 13333 Von Street in Pacoima, and all are invited to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Okay, if I can ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise? Adjourning motions, members? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Colleagues, today I rise to adjourn in memory of John J. Royal of San Pedro. John, a dear friend, the son of Achilles and Albina Royal, was born June 24th, 1922, in Wolf Creek, Colorado, and passed away peacefully in his home on February 18th in San Pedro. John is survived by his loving wife of 64 years, Rosie, his daughter Linda, whom I spoke with this morning, John's two grandchildren and three sisters, Virginia Mulligan, Marion Patricio, and Betty Peterson. John was well-known as a commercial fisherman and was active in the Fishermen's Union of ILW, where today, my dad will never forget how he helped with the hundreds of fishermen down at the San Pedro Fisherman's Wharf. He also served as the Executive Secretary Treasurer. During these years, John was appointed to several state and national committees, including President of the LA Harbor Commission and Advisor to Pacific Fisheries Management Council. His true passions in life were being with his family, spending time in Colorado, fishing and working in his garden, helping others, and fighting vigorously for the rights of the fishing industry. John Royal, as I often call him, Giovanni Royale, will be truly missed, and I'll miss spending time with him with having a couple Italian sodas. So, John, we love you, and to his family, our thoughts and prayers are with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Other, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with great, great sadness that I move that the council adjourn in memory of Daron Amor Zetillion, who was the infant son of Hagen and Misak Zetillion, and passed away at just two months old. Shortly after he came home from the hospital, Daron became ill due to complications with an infection, and his parents and the hospital did everything that they could to help him. But unfortunately, after just two months, Daron lost his, his fight. But in those two months, he was a source of great light and love for all those around him. He will always be loved and greatly missed. His middle name, Amor, of course, in French means love. In Armenian, it means strength. And certainly, little Daron showed both of those in the short time that he was with us on this earth. His parents, Hagen and Misak, met at my victory party in June 2006, when I was elected to the State Assembly. And so, it's with a very heavy heart and deep sadness that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of their first child, Daron Amor Zetillion.
Without a doubt, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd like to, in behalf of Ms. Perry, CD9, today I'd like to adjourn in memory of Emma Hammack, beloved resident of Pueblo del Rio Housing Development, and the resident of the 9th District since 1962. She was 97 years old at the time of her passing, born in Grand Cayenne, Louisiana. She moved to Los Angeles in 1949. She was a fixture at the 9th District's annual senior fair, a devoted member of the faith community of Paradise Baptist Church. She showed great commitment to helping her community. Her wisdom faith service helped many local youth gain confidence and success. She's remembered as a loving, remembered lovingly by all who knew her in both charity and goodwill. She's survived by her son Bobby and Fred, and her daughters Paulette and Bertie, along with a host of grandchildren and great-grandchildren. At this time, I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to her family and friends and all who knew her.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Members, this, there's no more business before this committee. This, this council meeting is adjourned.